We'll eliminate the directing staff to study the matter responding to any criticism or scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision as of your time. Right now, we have, um, I have one.
Anything in your garage in the city of Somerton? Uh, and the reason the law was enacted in this city was, I guess, to keep homeowners from putting borders inside of their garage, people living there or what have you not. He told us the only way we could do that was to put a shade over the car because you've got to have shade over, I guess, your cars in the city of Somerton, which I've never heard of, at least not, because I live in Yuma, not in Somerton. Anyways, after driving through his neighborhood, uh, there are no houses with any kind of a shade structure on the garage. And I, myself and David believe that that would take away from the beauty of the neighborhood by putting up some kind of a screened, uh, shade for the cars as the ones they have on Somerton Avenue when you come in that are falling down and what have you not. The, the, the problem is, is, uh, we want to put these two walls up. We want to separate it so we can have a home gym, want to hang some cabinets. He's never parked a car in his garage in 18 years that he's resided there. And, um, I then spoke with Saul, who I believe is where they're planning in Sony, which, by the way, very nice gentleman, um, listened to me, we talked. I said, well, how, how much shade you got to cover your car? Do you got to cover your whole car, half your car? Because the garage, the way it was built 18 years ago, if you go buy a new F-250 or a Dodge truck, there's no way you can park it in your garage. So what I'm asking is, um, I don't know if variance is the right word, but I would like to be able to work with the city council and someone to look into this. I, I mean, I'm not here tonight to tell you how to run your city, your community. I think it's beautiful. My ex-fawan law was mayor here for many years. But you have laws. If you want to keep people from residing inside of a garage or a carport, all you got to do is have your police officers go up and down the neighborhood. If they got a California plate or an out-of-state plate and they reside and they're residing and they're working here, you can sign them. I mean, and you can make some money. And that's been on Arizona statute books for many, many years. I mean, so I think having a shade over your car to deter somebody enclosing their garage or putting a room in this particular instance, not a room other than to divide it, to be able to put a home gym and be able to have a closet and have some linen closets, but have a wall to put those things up against. So I don't know who I need to talk to. Apparently, your Sal, who has three hats that he wears, is pretty close-minded. And I don't know if the buck stops with Sal or if the buck stops here with the city council. But I would like to know some direction, where to go to and where to work to and how to get around this and get it to happen. Because if, I, this is a starting point. I mean, I don't want to go, I'm not here to make it at all, by all means, but, and I'm not doing that, but I just want to be able to do it. Otherwise, I'd just be climbing up the ladder somewhere because as a homeowner, he's improving. What he wants to do doesn't alter the structure of that building whatsoever. It's a garage. We're not adding square footage. Square footage is there already. So if you can tell me which way I need to go, which direction I need to work with, I certainly would like to know.
We'll give, um, this information to Mr. Cabredin. He can contact you. He can, and maybe, um, Mr. Lozano can also chime in. Yeah. So, um, we have your contact information here.
Yes, ma'am.
The one that you just filled out. So we'll go ahead and, um, give it to Mr. Cabredin and he'll, he can give you a call to follow up on this.
Certainly appreciate it. I appreciate your time in this matter and, uh, it's been a nice city.
Thank you very much. Nobody else from, uh, for call to the public? Moving on to consent agenda, approval of June 16, 2020, regular council meeting minutes and approval of July 7, 2020, regular council meeting minutes. Anybody have any questions or comments on that?
Motion? Motion to approve consent agenda?
Motion by Mr. Galindo. Second by Mr. Gonzalez. All of them favor?
Right.
I, motion carries. Moving on to our proclamations. Proclamation recognizing the month of October 2020 as domestic violence awareness month. Mr. Cabredin? Do we have any?
These features, nothing I'm aware of.
If you want to, you don't have to.
Thank you so much. I'm Diane. I'm based with Amberly's Place. That's 1310 South Third Avenue, and that's in the city of Yuma. And I just want to thank you for taking the time and the effort to put together a proclamation on domestic violence awareness. Three women a day lose their lives in the United States to domestic violence. It's a serious crime. And it's impacted those who live in the city of Somerton, just as it has anywhere else. We're very thankful for the support that you not only give to the victims that live within your community, but also your police department in allowing us to have an office there and to work hand in hand with them. We really believe that getting out there and responding to them and letting them know what services are available helps them. But the biggest thing that we really need in all communities is when you see something, speak up. Pick up the phone and call the police department. Let them know something's going on. They're not going to call them and tell them who told them that, but they're going to respond and they're going to check on that family. And hopefully by doing that, we can prevent further homicides. So just thank you once again for taking the time and the effort to do this. We see over 2,000 victims a year, we're close to 3,000 victims a year within Yuma County, and a lot of those are from your community. So thank you for letting them know it's okay to reach out and thank you for working with us. We really do appreciate it.
And we thank you for the collaboration that you have with our city as well and all your work.
Thank you.
Do I need a motion before I read it?
No, just a proclamation.
Proclamation, domestic violence awareness month, whereas domestic violence is an issue affecting Arizonans in all communities, regardless of age, gender, economic status, race, religion, nationality, or educational background. And whereas 24 people in the United States are victims of intimate partner violence every minute, and whereas one in four and one in 10 men, one in four women and one in 10 men have experienced contextual violence, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner during their lifetime. And whereas 30% of children exposed to intimate partner violence at their first exposure before the age of two, and an additional 26% had their first exposure between the ages of two and seven. And whereas the city of Somerton continues to experience high volumes of domestic violence cases, and whereas victims of domestic violence are more likely to experience long-term mental and physical health concerns, including a higher risk of chronic disease, substance abuse, post-traumatic stress disorder, depression, and anxiety. And whereas challenges related to the COVID-19 global pandemic, including stressors such as unemployment, reduced income, limited resources, and social support, may increase risk factors for family violence. And whereas domestic violence awareness month provides an important opportunity to enhance education, prevention, and intervention efforts around domestic violence and support organizations and individuals to provide advocacy efforts, services, and assistance to victims. Now therefore, I, Heraldo Naya, Mayor of the city of Somerton, do hereby proclaim October 2020 as domestic violence awareness month. We have our next proclamation recognizing the, um, month of October 2020 as breast cancer awareness month. Proclamation, breast cancer awareness month. Whereas in 2020, the American Cancer Society estimates 5,630 women and men will be diagnosed with breast cancer in Arizona, and 115 will die from the disease. And whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month is a worldwide annual campaign in October involving thousands of organizations to highlight the importance of breast cancer awareness, education, and research. And whereas according to the Centers for Disease and Prevention, breast cancer is the second most common cancer among women. And whereas increasing the public's knowledge about the importance of early detection of breast cancer diagnosis and treatment can save lives. And whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an opportunity to unite all citizens in the city of Somerton and surrounding community to prevent breast cancer death through increased education and regular screening. And whereas this October, as we've raised, displayed pink ribbons or wear pink clothing to raise awareness, we recognize breast cancer survivors both currently battling the disease, friends and family of diagnosed patients, and applaud the efforts of our medical professionals and researchers working to find a cure. Now therefore, I, Heraldo Naya, Mayor of the city of Somerton, do hereby proclaim October 2020 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Somerton, and urge all residents to learn about the help, to learn about and help eliminate this devastating disease. Item number three, presentation by Yuma Safe Produce Council regarding food safety and produce, and produce deals within Somerton city limits, particularly those adjacent to walkways and residential areas.
Vice Mayor, um, council members, we do have, um, Arizona Department of Agriculture, they come in to, to speak to us. And, um, go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and council members, for allowing myself, Mary Campbell, and Lucy Camarena. We are actually representing the Yuma Safe Produce Council. And, um, Ernie is not available tonight. He is, I believe, in Phoenix for work. So, um, we wanted to just, um, let you know that we, the role that we play within our company, but representing actually the agriculture industry here in the area. And the Yuma State Produce Council is actually a group of food safety professionals. And together we, our mission is to educate not only those that we work with in the growing areas, but the communities of Yuma and throughout the state and even throughout the country. So we have a message that we spread, and that's one thing that we would like to do, um, tonight, is help inform you of some of the things we do and also ask, um, maybe for cooperation in this type of partnership. We brought some information that we would, um, will leave some bags for each one of you that has some information inside of some of the brochures that we share in the different communities, especially when they're visitors. Um, we share them typically at the libraries when they're open and, and other events that happen throughout the season, the growing season. We are obviously a big part of this community. I grew up here on a farm. I, Somerton has always been a big part of my life. I was married in the Somerton Methodist Church here. And, um, Lupe is also, she's from East County and farms around this area. So we are well aware of the growth, the incredible, um, energy all of you are putting into this area. So we thought you might be interested in our presentation tonight. One thing that we, um, oh, want to address is that we have sponsors within our group, uh, the different growers in our area. And we usually look for certain projects to help with food safety. And one of the projects we were wondering if we could participate with you is, um, in your walking areas, we do recognize you have some beautiful areas, um, in the north end of Somerton, uh, dog, pet stations, trash areas, benches, that kind of thing. But we also know that you've expanded, the city of Somerton has expanded to the south, southwest, southeast, and those areas don't have some of those stations yet. And, um, we're not sure what your plan is for those, but we do have some funds to help put stations, some of the pet stations in, but we would ask if there was partnership with Somerton that, um, they could be restocked and, and the trash emptied and things like that. So that was one thing we wanted to offer. But we also want to know if there's opportunities in Somerton where we could perhaps put our brochures that explain how the community assists us in keeping our fields clean, our, um, our canals and ditches clean, um, to not have waste, not, our pets, that pets belong on leashes if they're out, not running wild, that kind of thing. So it's an opportunity for us to educate the community in a different way. You want to, yeah, talk more about any other?
Yeah, so just to show you some of the brochures, what they say, you know, like, keep dogs on a leash and away from fields, exercise horses and other animals away from fields, do not enter agricultural fields, do not litter, never dump objects or dispose of unwanted substances in canal or ditches. There's a hunting brochure. We also work with the animal controls. And so, you know, we want to learn what Somerton has in place. Do you guys have an animal control unit here? And do you get a lot of calls? Do you have a lot of issues? I, we personally grow here on the east side of the school here and on the, uh, west side all along Scissor Chavez. Those are all fields that belong to Nature Fresh Farms, who is, who I work for as well. And, um, those pet stations are really awesome. You guys did a good job. I want to compliment you there. Um, some of the activities we do see is we still have people, um, walking in the fields, walking their animals. So as Mary mentioned, you know, help, uh, work together, help raise awareness to the community and how we can get that word out, um, to prevent some of these contaminations that have been happening here the last recent years. And also, like I said, you know, learn what you guys have in place for animal control. If we, you can provide a number so we can get out to our community in case we do have issues around these surrounding areas. Trash control, you guys have, uh, procedures in place. How can we help? Or, um, you know, getting out some of these bookmarks, it's very good information. We have them in English and in Spanish. If, you know, just allowing us or having a location or figuring out how we can, we can get these out to the community. I think it's important to mention, you know, Arizona Leafy Greens, we grow leafy greens here from November through March. Um, there's 130 million servings a day. That's 85% of leafy greens consumed in North America. We are classified as, Arizona is known as the winter lettuce capital of this country. And so as you know, agriculture is huge, um, around this area, around our community.
Right. I, I think we're all aware that agriculture is what built Somerton. And we're all proud of it, and we want to see it continue to be, um, a highlight of the leafy green, uh, program. And so that's why we're interested in working with the city of Somerton. And we're actually excited about what you've already got in place. And so we wanted you to know that we're available if you need a speaker at any time. If you're interested in partnering with any kind of program, we're, we're here for you. And so we, we just wanted you to know we're here. And we're glad, we're glad you guys are here because we see how you're beautifying this city. And I know it's important for you to have an excellent reputation like we want to have, so.
Thank you for, for bringing this information over to us. And I'm, I'm pretty sure we'll have, we can have some space out there, um, for your brochures and.
Out here?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
That where you can put your brochures. Um, and do we have your contact information?
Um, is there any, right?
Maybe Mr. Cabredin can follow up with you there.
Okay. Alrighty.
We'll put our, our business card over so you guys can contact us. And then we'll work on getting, printing some more brochures to, to bring them in and we can pop them off here.
Anybody have any questions?
You guys have been doing awesome jobs with, uh, produce safe. Are, are you guys doing anything right now?
As a pandemic, do we have enough PPE for, uh, workers, field workers? Or are we, are you guys doing something about that or helping or is the produce council in Yuma approaching that, you know, we're going to have 5,000, 6,000 from Mexico coming to, are this approach? And, and, you know, I work in the medical, the line one, everybody needs to be safe and, you know, that's something that we, it's something new to, uh, to, to work.
We are definitely gearing up for this season, and we are in contact with the, um, Public House Department. I'm also part of Yuma Fresh Vegetable Association Board, and so that, we're in contact and they are very helpful in that regard. Each company is responsible for, for getting the PPE, and I know we're gearing up for that. We'll see how this season goes and, um, we will reach out for sure if anyone knows if a shortage happens that we can't access, how to get more. But we're, we're in a big planning stage right now. It's, it's going to be interesting. There's no doubt about it. COVID testing, um, the housing, there's going to be some challenges, but we're, we're, we're working on trying to get that squared away, but thank you. We will let you know if there, if we need assistance, definitely. So that is a big, that is high, um, on our level of priority. It's making sure, um, everyone is safe. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we appreciate you guys for coming in.
Yes, sir. And please help yourself to a bag, just, just take along.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the time.
Moving on to item number four, water, police department and wastewater solar farms presentation. Mr. Palas?
Yes, um, you can help us assist a little bit with that. Several months ago, uh, the city of Somerton contracted with Mr. Jesus Corona.
Um, and right now we're looking at an update as far as where we're at with all these solar farms. Two of them are, are working more than 80% of the, of the production. They're still working on the, the police department. But there is a presentation.
Good evening, uh, Vice Mayor Garcia, members of council. Jesus Corona, 754 South Mendota Avenue here in Somerton. And, uh, we've been working on the solar farms since, uh, since the late, the late part of, uh, uh, June. We started in July, we started on out of water plant. And we have a brief presentation, uh, about the, the, the solar farms, uh, that Somerton has right now. Uh, we have three solar farms, that's wastewater, we can ten, ten sets, the water plant, we have 17 sets, that's the biggest one, and the police department with nine sets. Next question?
Um, for the, for the water plant, uh, we started, when we started, all 17 sets were down. We're not either tracking the sun or producing. Uh, I was able to fix all of them, all of the tracking problems, because, uh, the systems are, are very specific on the way they work. They need to be tracking the sun consistently before you can actually start working on production. Because it's, uh, you only have a margin of error very small. So you need to fix that before you can start the production part. And I, I had a, a few problems that were not present, uh, ever before. And we have flagging errors, uh, that, uh, I've, I've never seen. This systems, when, uh, when I was in charge of them about two and a half years ago, um, it, the fixing was done without, um, without having manuals or anything because the, the company that was supposed to do the service went down. So, uh, nothing was, uh, available and, and everything was started from, uh, from the ground up, learning how to, how the systems work. And then I started, uh, fixing them. At the water plant, I have 11 of the, uh, 17 sets producing. And, and of those, they do require, uh, um, regular maintenance because they have various protection systems, uh, uh, or, or, um, um, programs in place that if anything fails, it stops. that if anything fails, it stops. So i- it's a constant maintenance. So, next, next slide, please. The main errors I, I encountered on, on the um, um, on the sets that were not producing, um, they, they actually vary. Um, but they're complicated since there's no data of uh, what it's, uh, what it's about. And this system consists in mechanical, electrical and electronical systems. So i- i- it's either or. And so I had to uh, um, for, for each error or flag, I had to do um, a troubleshooting and, and in-depth troubleshooting, trying to fix them and then I'll have a, um, a, a very good idea of what the problem is. Oh, a, at any point, if anybody has a question, uh, feel free to ask any questions. Um, these systems, they use actually magnifying glasses. So um, it has to be, the setting with the sun, it has to be very consistent and very precise. You only have a margin of error of about three degrees. So uh, it has to be constantly monitored. Next, next uh, slide, please. The main errors I, I encountered on, at the water plant was irregular tracking. Uh, one day it would be tracking and the next day it will, it will totally go down or it'll freeze on one of the sides. So I worked on them until they were moving consistently since I need that to move into the production phase. Uh, and I have uh, on the production area, once I, I got those done, um, uh, I had in very errors uh, that, that's the part that produces. Um, and I had in barriers that um, um, there were nowhere, they've never been seen before. So those are more like engineering problems, but it, it just takes time to, to pinpoint what the problem is. Uh, like contactors not activating, various digital errors, and SD cards programming errors. So this is, uh, this is, are also, each one has a computer. So uh, i- if, if the SD card was just the memory that it contains to, to read and, and, and that controls the motion as well as the production, if, if one of those goes down, e- everything goes down. Um, next slide, please. At the wastewater, that was the last uh, uh, of the solar farms that it was installed here in Somerton. That was the, that's the newest one. Um, at the start, none of them were tracking or producing. Um, I fixed all the tracking problems. Now, one of them went down. Um, and, and that one has multiple errors. Uh, that particular set, even the first time that I was here working, uh, it was not producing. It, that, that system seems to be uh, um, a candidate to a complete removal of the control system and install. I only have one uh, extra control box. Uh, uh, I have several parts, but whole control box only have one. And that's a pretty uh, uh, good candidate to replace the whole thing to make it uh, work again. Since this uh, uh, systems are the newest one, they actually, the production of them is really, really good. So um, that's a, that's a good candidate to, to replace the whole thing. Um, next slide, please. The main errors that I encounter at the wastewater plant, um, as I said, as I mentioned before, uh, one was never uh, fully functional. Um, even uh, uh, the first time I was here about two and a half years ago, I had to rewire it because uh, uh, some of the cables were done improperly. So I had to uh, to redo it, but there's several digital problems on that one. And it, it's too many to be able to replace everything. That's why I believe that the whole control is uh, is the best idea to, to have it work. Um, and, and the other one has an inverted uh, uh, A-six. That's uh, that's the, the one on the, on the uh, uh, southwest corner. Uh, has an invertor, uh, it, it's fixable. The only problem is, I, I already found the problem, but I had to disassemble the whole thing. So I, 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 I actually move on to try and fix the, as many as I can and then go into the most difficult ones. Uh, because they're, they're gonna take uh, too much time and I have a time constraint on my contract. So that's why I, I left that uh, on the side, but I am gonna return to that one. Uh, next slide, please. At the police department, um, police department, we haven't started on it yet and, and it's gonna start next week. Uh, we had some uh, some logistic problems and they're uh, having some impound vehicles in the lot and, and the, the ground has to be graded in order to enter with uh, with a sister list. Um, that is on the works right now and uh, we're gonna be able to work starting on Monday. Uh, on those, uh, some of them are kind of moving, but they're out of phase and they're out of set. So none of them right now are producing and they're not tracking properly. So um, those uh, we, we, I, I'm yet to know which ones have any critical errors or, or, or not. One of them is not communicating the, uh, out of the nine. Um, eight, eight of them are communicating well, but one of them, I don't even know what the problem is because it doesn't communicate with the computer. So, so that one, uh, um, I'm not sure what the problem is, but I'm, I'm pretty sure I can, I can fix it. Next, next slide, please. Now, this farm, as I was saying, uh, it, it was a, it was designed for remote access. Uh, the company that it was doing it, it was uh, uh, doing most of the fine tuning on a remote site. Uh, when the company went down, um, that remote site went down too. And so therefore there's, there's nothing, uh, um, that disappeared, that service disappeared. Um, and what they did in the past is that once there was enough physical errors, they will come and fix them. But otherwise, it was just remote. Um, next slide, please. So as, as I was mentioning before, the systems are very precise and the margin of error is only of, of three degrees. After three degrees, the voltage required to the inverter to kickstart, eh, it will happen. And constant maintenance is required. The way the system is designed, uh, it's uh, anything goes bad and to prevent further errors uh, to be detrimental of the uh, of the systems, it just stops moving and, and the signal there. So uh, the, the, the maintenance that is required is uh, electronics, electricity, programming and uh, some system communication sometime, sometimes, not, not all the time. But yeah, the system communication is, is fixed, only one set of the police department is not communicating. So that one is the only one that we need to work on. Next slide, please. I think that's the, no, okay. For the overall production, the, the repairs are not complete. And the reason I'm moving from one side to the other is because I need to get the motion uh, perfectly tracking the sun. And that's the main point of this uh, sorry, about the, this set. They need to track the sun uh, very consistently in order to fix the next problems. Because if, if they require voltage to kickstart doesn't happen, I can't fix them. Voltages are not present, then I cannot uh, troubleshoot properly the system on what the problem is. Uh, so o- once I completed an analysis, will determine the percent of, of gain uh, of, 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 of usage versus production. Um, right now, since I just uh, started with this systems, we don't have any data to tell you, okay, this is, this is how much you're using the water plant, the wastewater plant, the police department, and this much is being produced. Therefore, this is your gain. Uh, I don't have that data yet. And, and I, I think we will have it uh, within the next uh, two, three months. And once this uh, and once this uh, uh, this data is, is available, I will share that with you and, and, and we can take it from there. Because there is ways for this system to improve. Um, uh, that complete report, as I said, it will come probably in the uh, first or second week of January. Uh, the, the contract ends in December, so by January, we'll, we'll have a, a good idea of where we are. I think that's the last, last slide. Yeah. Uh, now I can entertain any questions you may have.
I, I have um, just to put, like, in on, um, you know, you're mentioning that you don't have, um, you know, not all the systems are complete. Um, the most visible ones, of course, are the ones.
Yes.
Mentioned that three of those are, and you can see that they're.
Yeah, they're flat, uh-huh.
The worst case scenario, if they were not, if you weren't able to get them to, you know, align on the time, their possibility of at least having, you know, them lift up the when, you know, the sometimes.
Now, we'll get some type of productivity or do you think they work?
No, actually that is uh, not possible because uh, it, it, the two axes, uh, which is uh, rotation and translation, uh, uh, on, translation, uh, on, on, on sun, it varies, depends on the time of the year. So the angle, a- as you notice right now, it's, it's, it's kind of like this in the middle of the day because the sun is on this side, but it's lower. During summer, it's more vertical, it's, it's more up there. Um, so it changes a lot. The only way we can actually uh, achieve that, and, and this is a possibility that it could be uh, um, um, that it could be done on this, is, is to change the type of uh, of receivers. The receiver says what, what gets the voltage out of the sun. Right now, it's magnifying glasses and, and uh, it, it's good to, to say that we have plenty of extras. But I, I think the motion on those, I still have parts. The reason that they're down is because uh, those problems are complicated and I, I need to go back to them once I get the bulk, the bulk of them uh, going on. Uh, but I am gonna return to those. Those actually fixed them twice. And now I came with a, a different error, uh, which is very uh, uh, particular with those because two of them came out with the same error that I've never seen before. So if I fix one, I'll fix the other. And I, I do have parts, uh, sufficient parts uh, um, for probably uh, do maintenance for a few years on this, on this system. Yeah, those are gonna be fixed.
Don't we get a report from APS how much we are producing a year saving or?
And do you remember?
We do have.
Because, you know, if we're not producing and eh, every year we're gonna contract Mr. Corona and this, I think we're wasting more money than what we are producing. In that case, I would, you know, to me, it would be more beneficial just to eliminate him, you know, sorry, you know. I know we got spring bolt months after we got him and they were back and see and that was it. And the computers burned because those were done in California where the weather is different and. So, you know, we have heard this over and over, so I think I would like to get a complete information. How much are we producing a year and how much money we're spending on contract and this? We're not about it because if we're spending more money, it's not even worth it, you know.
Yeah.
You know, you're doing a great job, but if it's one day you fix it, the next day they're back down and some are not fixable, you know. Uh, seven out of nine are working, so are they producing enough to, for us to say, yeah, we are gonna continue contracting you because if it's not worth it, why are we spending money? I think it's something we might, we'd like some information about that.
Yeah.
And we, we actually, um, uh, Sam and myself spoke about this uh, right after we received the um, the PowerPoint. Uh, we, we do have a concern.
Like the end of December or not, uh, uh, early January?
Early January, I would say, uh, it'll be, it'll be a better time. And one thing that it happened and it was, it was about two and a half years with no maintenance. And, and that's why I, when I came back, all of them were down. Eh, I mean, it, it, it needs constant maintenance. It's not a, a, a very uh, uh, intricate maintenance. I mean, it doesn't need like twenty-four hours surveilled, but it does need regular maintenance. So when one goes down, you work on that one, get it fixed and you get it going. But it was a two-year when all of them went down. And, and that's, that's, we're trying to get to a point where, whoa, uh, to a point where we have all of them working and then you're gonna see the cost benefit i- i- if you have, you know, and what it needs to be done to increase production. Because we have extra parts and we also have extra equipment that could be uh, could be help, uh, uh, could be helping to improve the, the production on, on uh, um, other, other waste, uh, not the wastewater, but the water plant. So there, there's several things that it could be improved.
Would like to see on that report too that from, you guys were here twenty seventeen, you and uh, what's that? The computer.
On, on, on.
You know, how much money we spend off from that year to this year, you know, to the end of the, of December to see if it's really in the production and the spending. So I would like, you know, I want to see numbers, not they're working, they're not working. I, to me, it works better when I see that number, compare numbers to numbers instead. Ones working, two are working because they're not producing. I was here when we got spring bolt and it was a great idea back in the days and every, we were so happy because they were gonna produce, we were gonna save a lot of money. But you know, I'm one of those that if it's not working, you know, I'll take, it's my fault, I voted yes. But you know, it's time to move on and, and start, look for something better or?
Well, definitely look at the historical data. One thing that always take in mind is that APS did change the rate. Well, even looking at the historical um, data, that's, that's the idea of trying to see if there was a depth specific um, um, rate change, see if we would have continued at that amount. I, I don't know how the contract with three volts was actually done in terms of, of longitudinal. It was gonna be at that same uh, APS rate.
Is there any, have any questions?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next item, presentation and status update of a small business relief fund approved by city council on September fourth and administered by Local First Arizona, a five oh one C three nonprofit organization.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Garcia. We have a, a Kimber Lanning, uh, she has only ten more, ten more minutes. Uh, I prefer for her to start the, the conversation and then I can continue. Um, Kimber, can you hear me?
Yes, I sure can. Thank you.
You can start, Kimber, just to explain about uh, the uh.
Sure.
The project and then I can come up with that. Thank you.
Sure. Um, absolutely. So Vice Mayor, members of the council, I really would like to, first of all, congratulate you on, um, on prioritizing small businesses in Somerton. Um, and also for being very forward-thinking in your approach and nimble in your response to those small businesses. Um, and, and I mean, um, what I want to acknowledge is your leadership is really uh, helping Somerton uh, stand ahead across the state. There are many uh, councils who are, are trying to make decisions and you acted quickly and swiftly. Uh, and your staff has been outstanding to work with. So first and foremost, congratulations. Um, secondly, I want to let you know that the business community has been very, very grateful. Uh, they've been very responsive as well and easy to work with and, and very collaborative. So um, I wanted to uh, provide you with some information of where we are right now. Uh, we have provided a total, we have completed a total of twenty-nine grants and those are in direct assistance, as you know, to the businesses there. Sixteen of those were Spanish preferred businesses. Thirteen of those were English preferred businesses and went through the process as such. Um, and the average grant size was three thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. Um, as of right now, we have distributed ninety-six thousand dollars and we have four thousand in reserves. And I'll be, be working with staff to determine how we want to distribute those remaining four thousand dollars. Um, the, uh, what you're looking at here on the screen are the businesses that we've been able to assist. And uh, as I mentioned, these businesses were uh, very gracious, uh, very uh, easy to work with. uh, very, uh, easy to work with and, and very, very appreciative for your leadership and the assistance during this, uh, difficult time. So I'd like to open it up, uh, to see if anybody has any questions or clarifications on the report.
Did you have any question?
Like some questions, Kimberly?
Yeah, you can see a wide variety of different types of businesses. You've got, um, you've got personal care, you've got business assistance, you've got restaurant, you've got retail, just a wide variety of businesses apply. And the majority of them will be able to use these dollars for operating, general operating expenses, covering rent, utilities, those types of things. So very much needed and very appreciated.
We appreciate you, uh, doing this for our city and, um, I have talked to two businesses that, um, as we know, everybody's struggling right now and that, that they do appreciate this, this effort. And, you know, we thank you for, for taking over and, um, being able to disperse so quickly.
Absolutely. Uh, we're, we're happy to do it and, uh, we, we believe that small business is, is, uh, the thing that makes our economies work and it also, uh, those small businesses help bring the, the flavor and character to our communities that keep them unique and, and they help build hometown pride. Uh, so thank you for believing in them and giving them an opportunity, uh, like this. It's really a powerful gesture on your part. So thank you for allowing us to support you.
Was there any limitations on this grant? Uh, they were saying they can use it through, you know, payroll and other, are we expecting any information from them back telling them this is what we use for money or they can do whatever they want? Is the theory or?
Yeah, I, no, we're not expecting a, a further report other than, um, they have, uh, agreed that they will use them for business expenses, but they, they're not required to report back specifically on how they use those.
Just on good faith, we're, from.
Yeah, yeah, that's a requirement just to, they can use it for their own business. Uh, because as you know, on the last few months, they did have a hard time during the, especially the summer. So this was wel- welcome money for them. I talk to all the businesses that you see on the lease, one by one. And like I Kimberly mentioned, we are really, really thank the city, city council for providing this, uh, this fund to help them during this pandemic. They're really using the money from right now.
Yeah. Some questions. Do they know, do they have to report this under taxes or no?
Yes, they do.
It is an income, right?
It is, and we gathered a W9 from each business. Um, and so those will be, uh, reported as per usual. So they, it will show up as income for them.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, out of those 29 businesses, actually, we got 33 applications, uh, only 49 qualified for a few reasons, but I mean, the majority of the business in Somerton, they got some funds for them to use it for their, you know, survival on this pandemic. So again, on behalf of the businesses community, they asked me to tell you thank you, uh, for the, uh, for the funds they received. Uh, when I went to dinner, one of the small businesses here on Main Street, they told me the same thing, uh, to thank city council and the city staff for helping them to, uh, with these, uh, funds. And for my side too, it was really easy to work with Kimberly, Danny from Local, which Arizona. We went back and forth and many times during this, uh, couple of months. Uh, it was very easy, very easy to transition and the funds and also working with her staff. So thank you, Kimberly, for your help.
Well, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure working with you and, uh, I do wish you all the very best and, and please know that we are here. We are the Arizona Rural Development Council. So if we can be of assistance in the future, please don't hesitate to reach out. Uh, you have a friend and ally in us.
Thank you, Kimberly. Kimberly.
Have a good evening. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys too for, um, helping us put this, uh, you know, this grant together. Um, I think as a, as a city, we're here to help each other and, and, um, we're very grateful that we were able to get this money and, and, uh, to be able to help our, our local businesses that, um, you know, as I said, we're all facing some type of issue and, and, um, we thank you, um, for coordinating this and, and Kimberly as well. Um, I guess we're here, we're here to help each other.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, discussion and possible action to approve contract 1-21 between the City of Somerton and the Arizona Department of Housing for the U.S. Department of土地. Projects, SSP funds in the amount of $500,000 for the Fulton Street and Council Avenue.
Kimberly of the council, Yolanda Galindo, I'm the CDPG consultant for the City of Somerton. And, um, I believe the, all the public hearings that we've had in the past, and I've come to you for our authorizations have paid off. I want to congratulate, I want to thank, um, Sam Palacios and Virago Choa for assisting me and providing a successful application. Um, it's for the Arizona Department of Housing, CDPG, the state special front. It's a competitive cycle. I believe, um, I think 26 applications were submitted to the state of Arizona and only 11 were, um, awarded. And obviously in this region, it was City of Somerton and Yuma County that got, but only really a road project came out here from this area. So we have 30 days to put this project on the road. That's one of the special conditions that we have, that we must put the project on, out to construct it within 30 days. But it is, this is, I've never, I worked with CDPG for the past 35 years and I've never seen it this high. It was always 300,000 and this year they made the exclusion, it was 500. So, so you did get the full amount. So.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate your help in all of this. I know that, um, you know, working with Sam to make this happen, but we know that you, you're the expert. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Do want to mention that, uh, under lease, there's, uh, two items, uh, 9.5 and 9.6. She, she's helping with, uh, some USDA, uh, local support with, uh, Sam and really good news what Yolanda's doing. Definitely saved us another $80,000 until those two purchases.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
He, he says that he has the Galindo.
It's in the last name.
Motion for the contract 1-10-21.
Oh, no, mayor, vice mayor.
Motion by Mr. Galindo. And extend like a second by Mr. Gonzalez. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, discussion and possible action to approve a grant agreement between the City of Somerton and the State of Arizona for distribution of federal dollars for the U.S. Department of Treasury from the U.S. Department of Treasury Coronavirus Relief Fund. Chief Nanda.
Vice Mayor, City Council, I'm, I'm on your Zoom connection and I couldn't connect my phone like I tried to. But, um, anyway, this is, uh, something that came about on September 9th when Governor Ducey approved our application from FEMA. And, uh, as a result, Andrea processes for us. She did a tremendous job gathering, uh, all the receipts and expenses that the city had pushed forward from the different departments. And it was a total of 19 responses for, uh, $2,415.49. The big thing about this one, it doesn't require another or a match cost. So there's no cost to the city. And the period of performance does end in December 31st. So it's important that we have the council, uh, agree to this agreement. And this way we can, uh, make sure that the, this, uh, period of performance is fulfilled as far as what the state requires from us. And so, uh, you know, all they want is us to enroll in automatic clearinghouse. We, we have, we have to give them their W9s, all those things that they need. Uh, we had to register to FEMA, which we've done. And, uh, we have to make sure that we follow through with the, the paperwork, which in effect finalizes, uh, the payments that they've made to us. And so we're looking for your approval, uh, for this, uh, coronavirus relief fund, uh, that we've applied for and received.
Anybody have any question? You have a motion?
Motion, Vice Mayor, to approve the grant agreement between the State of Somers and the State of Arizona.
Motion by Mr. Galindo. A second by Mr. Gonzalez. All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Andrea. And thank you, chief.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Moving on to item number three, discussion and possible action to approve resolution 2020-019, a resolution of the mayor and council of the City of Somerton, Arizona, changing the city council meeting date for the month of November 22nd. Mr. Lopez.
So, uh, Vice Mayor and Council, good evening. Essentially what you have in front of you is a proposed resolution to change the city council date for the first Tuesday in November. Uh, on November 3rd, uh, 2020, we do have the presidential election, uh, due to, uh, the, the lack of adequate facilities. This year, we've contracted with Yuma County and we've selected the, uh, city hall to be the area where we'll, we'll hold our elections. Uh, typically an election runs, uh, up until 7:00 PM, but if people are still lined up, they have to be, the polls have to be open until everybody that's lined up votes. And for past elections, that could be 9:00 or 10:00 PM. So definitely we cannot use this room for a council meeting. On the alternate site was the, uh, Public Safety, uh, building, but again, that probably nobody really wanted to have a, a meeting on election night. So the proposal in front of you is, is to change the meeting date to, uh, the first Monday in November. So on, uh, November 2nd.
Anybody have any questions? Concerned? You have a motion to move the first, uh, meeting to November 2nd, Monday?
Oh, no, fair. Council member, stay right there.
I have a motion by Mr. Galindo and a second by Mr. Gonzalez. All those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number four, discussion and possible action to contract VSS International for the 2021 pavement preservation program, including, oh, including slurry seal.
Oliver, modified.
Modified master seal, PMM.
And? Excellent, excellent, seal binder. Evening, Vice Mayor and City Council. Uh, there before you is, uh, a possible contract with VSS, uh, International, uh, for the pavement preservation, including the seal of the slurry seal, PMM and, uh, GSD. Background for this item, uh, as you know, Cito Yuma, Oliver's Department advertised bid number 2020, 20000153 and, uh, 20202000158 for pavement preservation services and asphalt sealing. Uh, Cito Yuma awarded the contract to VSS International for the application of the slurry seal, PMM and the GSD as an alternate option for asphalt sealing. In order, uh, to continue with our pavement preservation for our streets, uh, we identified segments that needs this application. Uh, for reference, I have attached the map during the areas where we are, uh, proposing, uh, seal the, uh, road segments. The approximately square yards to be, to be applied will be as follow. Uh, slurry seal approximately 23,000 square yards, PMM approximately 99,000 square yards and GSD approximately 51,000 square yards. Uh, currently, VSS International will be working in, in Cito Yuma and will allow Cito Somerton to use the contract at the same price on those proposed, uh, bid number 2020, uh, 20000153 and 2020, 20000158. Uh, for reference, I have attached the Cito Yuma bid award results and the council minute, uh, minutes. Our recommendation for council is to approve and authorize the city manager to send a proposal from VSS International for the slurry seal, PMM and GSD in the amount of approximately 200,000. This cost will include the mobilization cost. Uh, as you may know, we have, uh, this item on my, on my budget, per budget with, uh, the same amount that I mentioned, 200,000. And council, Vice Mayor, do you have any question?
Any have any question?
Which areas are, I couldn't see the map.
Because, uh, uh, what I saw in the golf course.
Hey, for the slurry seal, it's going to be Palo Verde Gardens and Santa Clara State. For the PMM, it will be Bahia del Sol, Rollo St. Division, Moser and Tunnel, Somerton Gardens, Caesar Chavez Avenue, south of Rollo, and Tunnel and Congress and Federal. And for the GSD, it will be Williams Edition, which is basically includes Carlisle, Jacobs, Adams and Capital and Union from Carlisle to Somerton Avenue and Dol Valley.
All right, my motion.
Some move, Vice Mayor.
A motion by Mr. Gonzalez. Second by Mr. Galindo. All those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
And. Item number five, discussion and possible action to purchase a new street sweeper for a street department and new dump truck for wastewater department.
Okay, Vice Mayor, good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, discussion and possible consideration for this purchase of a street sweeper and a dump truck for the wastewater department. Uh, the background for this item, uh, as you know, our street department provides daily street sweeping to all of our city roads within our city boundaries. The sewer department utilized this dump truck daily to transport the solid waste to the landfill. Uh, I use, uh, 22 fry liner street sweeper and I use 200 dump trucks from the Arizona Department of Transportation was purchased about seven years ago. Uh, both equipments are, it needs of the end of life and needs to be replaced in order to improve our department daily operations. Uh, currently, we had a scheduled replacement of both equipments for this fiscal year. The acquisition of, uh, the new street sweeper and the new dump truck has been approved by council as part of our 2021 Urban Improvement Program, CIT. Uh, staff will use the Arizona State Contract Number CTR0418110 with Flyliner of Arizona for the purchase of both trucks. Uh, following the Arizona State Request for Proposal RSQ solic- solicitation number VP M000228. Uh, for reference, uh, hyatt dice the Arizona State Contract Letter of Award, determination of contract award and contract amendment extended the contract to January 18, 2021. Our recommendation for city council is to approve the purchase of the new street sweeper with the amount of 279,965 dollars and 30 cents. And the purchase of the new dump truck with amount of 144,701 dollar and zero, and six cents. Following the bids by the Arizona State Procurement Office Solicitation Number TM000228, contract number CTR0418110, and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for the best financing option for both equipment. Vice Mayor and Council, do you have any questions for?
I do have a question, Vice Mayor. Sam, uh, the fact that we're buying these two new trucks, that doesn't mean that the other ones are going to be just stored, right? I mean, we're going to continue using the, uh, what we have now, right? With maintenance and service?
That is correct, uh, Council Member, uh, Gonzalez. My, my plan is to have one street sweeper as a backup and, uh, current dump truck as a backup as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, you just started out on.
A continuation of the, of the next, of the end for, for both the three purchases, the three equipment.
What's our 2020 or 2021? What's our 2020 or 2021? And trucks are brand new?
Correct, brand new, yes.
Because this one, the second one is new 200, but I can't see.
It's brand new.
Vice Mayor and Council, we have never had ever, I think, in the history of Summerton, so.
It says new 200, so I want to.
History here.
It's historic.
Yeah, we'll make sure your picture is on there.
At least for the, for the street sweeper and for the dump truck, yes, it's going to be a new truck. I mean, we used to buy new trucks for the refuse truck. But for those two, sweeper and dump truck, yeah, it's going to be the first time.
I mean, they're going to be sweeping the street every day.
Every day, Sundays as well.
One of the things I'd like to, Vice Mayor, if I may.
She said, go ahead, Mr. Gonzalez.
You go.
Oh, yeah.
Do I have a motion for?
Please, can we check on Mr. Gonzalez? It's on him?
Motion to approve the purchase of the new street sweeper in an amount of 279,000 and the new dump truck for the amount of 144,000.
A motion by Mr. Galindo?
Please, thank you.
And I second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number six, discussion and possible action to purchase a new side loader.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and City Council. The item before you, discussion and possible consideration to purchase the new side loader, refuse truck for the sanitation department. Our background for this item, our sanitation department, as you know, provides residential trash collection service every day. Actually, every week, Monday to Thursday, using two side loaders, refuse trucks, and two older backup trucks. We use these backup trucks when servicing the primary trucks. Currently, we've had a schedule in the replacement of the 2009 Auto Car side loader refuse truck for this fiscal year. The acquisition of the new refuse truck has been approved by council as part of our 2021 capital improvement program, CIT. The 2009 Auto Car truck will be one of our backup trucks. And the current 2000 Volvo backup truck will be out of service and placed for sale at our action. Recently, the city of Yuma has acquired a new refuse truck by using Houston Galveston Area Council of Government Cooperative Purchasing Program, HGAC Buy Contract. Cito Yuma has, in their current fleet service, in your, in their current service, several trucks of this same body system. Cito Summerton is one, has an approved user to use this cooperative purchasing program and wants to proceed with this purchase by using the Cito Yuma contract, HGAC HT06-20. Worth mentioning is that the purchase of the truck and chassis will be from a local company. The contract was awarded to Rush Truck Center and they have been a branch here in Yuma. Our recommendation for city council is to approve the purchase of the new refuse truck following bids by the HGAC Buy, Contract Number HT06-20, same as the city of Yuma, with the amount of 356,370 dollars and 76 cents. And authorize city manager to execute an agreement for the best financing options for this purchase. Vice Mayor and Council, do you have any questions for me?
Mr. Gonzalez back here?
Yes, on the board.
Motion, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
A motion by Mr. Galindo. Second, second by Mr. Gonzalez, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you, thank you. Vice Mayor, I just want to mention something about the finance options. Here with us is Yolanda Galindo. Yolanda approached to me and mentioned that Cito, Town of Walton is working with USDA with a loan program that includes 50% grant with, I believe it's a 2.5 interest rate, which is very, very good. I received three quotes for the purchase of the refuse truck, the sweeper and the dump truck. I believe it's 3.5 the rate that they give us. So this is one point or maybe more on, on interest rate. So this is very good news. Here with us is Yolanda. You want to mention something about USDA? This is an option that we want to explore, so hopefully, it's, we're going to submit this application and hopefully can get it.
It's actually the interest rate is, on the federal fiscal year started October 1st, so the interest rate would be 2.125. And they expanded it, the term, the term of the loan would be the lifespan of that vehicle. Rob Lanford, he's been with USDA Rural Development for years and he reached out to me on Friday and I'm working with Walton getting them their refuse truck in. So I mentioned about Summerton and because you guys are still under the population of the 20,000, you guys still qualify for rural development. So he's very interested in working with us, so I told Sam that I would do the application and stuff for, for the city of Summerton so that we can, it's usually 15%, it's a 15% grant. And the other one is a loan, but the term of the loan is, is very, very, very appealing.
Again, we thank you for thinking of it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
You're good. I'm ready to turn you back.
Yes, actually, this is my first meet.
Thank you.
Yes. During these past two, three weeks, I've been with all the, all department heads. Went to, actually, most of, I've gone to most of the departments anyway. We're, we're waiting for Sam. We're not waiting for Sam, but we're going to be with those, those areas, which is the sewer and maintenance yard. So that's what we're still working on. Looking at COVID, today there was 186, I believe, tested here in Yuma County. 62 were positive. We're still waiting on the answer as far as the RZ code or R7. Hopefully by tomorrow morning, we should have those days. Which also puts us into looking at reopening either Tuesday or Friday, Tuesday and Friday next week. We're still undecided. I'm looking at those numbers, they're seeing very high from the past three days. The last one that we saw was that, well, yesterday was at zero, but the past ones was at 36%, or was 35.68, I believe, so 36%. So that's, that's kind of high. It was 21, 26, and 36. Well, that's still very high, so I'm very concerned. Tomorrow morning, as soon as Paul gets me those numbers, we will make a definite decision if we're going to reopen or not. We're still considering that. And then for our next future agenda item, the state of funding affairs will be on the October 20th. That's where we'll make the decision as far as some of these other CFP projects that we have in mind. Which also includes Summerton Care's budget. That's another item that we're going to be bringing up to you. And looking at the CARES Act funding, where we're at as well, and how they're getting dispersed. So one area that we're also looking at is bringing to your attention is maybe a COVID fee for the future traveling teams that may be coming to the area to practice. There, there is a cost for disinfecting and sanitizing the area for the future items. And with that, we have Carmen?
Were you going to read?
No, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of council. As you all may know, late on Friday, the, a federal judge changed or ruled the continuation of the 2020 census operation until October 31st. So we've been going back and forth with different dates. This is a new date that we have as of, as of Friday night. And here we are, staff and Arizona at work. We are working together. We're trying to partner in looking for means and ways to take advantage of the additional time. We are not thinking of doing events, as we have been doing it for the past several months. I think we, we did enough events and I think the residents are very grateful and the ones that were able to sign up and submit the questionnaires already to the events are, they already done it. So we are looking for other ways and means to do it. And one of those is trying to go back to the door-to-door responses, just trying to assist the residents that, in the areas that, that we have noticed or have identified that low response. So we're trying to do this. This is a very, very short time period, obviously, working with Arizona at work. It's, it's a process in itself. And, but we are certainly working and, and trying to come up with a group of people that are going to be visiting houses out there throughout the city. So that will be an announcement to the city residents that if they haven't done it, please do fill out their questionnaires. They're still taking the, the self-response. And with that, hopefully, we're going to be able to increase the self-response percentage that we have. So another update, this staff has re-initiated the review process for the in-seal incentive overlay plan. As you may remember, we've been working with this plan that is going to encompass the, the older part of, of the city along with the downtown. And this is to provide incentives, different incentives in the different areas that we have identified. Due to the COVID-19 situation, we had to stop because we obviously need to get some feedback from the residents that includes public meetings. But since we now have to, all these means to do it virtually, we are trying to reschedule those public meetings, public hearings with the residents of that area that we are proposing to be part of the in-seal overlay plan. And we would like to ask for their comments, their questions, their concerns, before we bring it to the Planning and Zoning Commission and finally, before council for, for approval. So that's what we have right now. Thank you.
Chief Harris?
Yes, hi, Derry. Can you, can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Council. I have a short report. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you on the proclamation for the Domestic Violence Month. As you notice, or if you have noticed in the last couple of months, or the last couple of days, our officers have been wearing the purple patch to bring awareness to the important issue of domestic violence. They've also been wearing the pink mask to remind everyone that we continue, or that we're bringing awareness to, to breast cancer awareness. That's another thing. We have had a great decrease in child reported crimes, which is concerning to us because our kids are not in school at this time. So we anticipate that we'll have an increase in, in reporting here when school starts. So we, unfortunately, we're probably going to be very busy, but we'll be available for the children. The other thing is that we've had very, very few issues with anyone vandalizing any of the political signs, but we did have an issue this morning where somebody stole a large amount of them. We're keeping an eye out there. We're making sure that everybody's following the rules and staying, preventing anyone from getting in trouble for that. So we're out there. If you see anything, if anyone sees anything, make sure that you let us know. We're, we're trying to keep things in order. And the last thing is that we, I've been working with Sam Palacios from Public Works in order to get our parking lot cleared for the solar panel maintenance. So that's another thing that's going to keep us busy because we do have a lot of cars back there, but that's all I have at this time. You guys have a good evening. Thank you.
Vice Chief Paul?
Two brief things. One is, what I've been mentioning about it, that is the public in general is going through what I call COVID fatigue. And what this means, it's everybody's getting tired of masking up, the social distancing, having to stay at home. And that, what's resulting, a lot of people are either guard down. And they're starting to make bigger and bigger gatherings around their homes. You'll see that reflected in the fact that the 853-50 is consistently higher in its infections than the county itself. In other words, the county might have more infections as, as a number, but we have more infections corresponding to the amount of people we comprise. We're only like 9.7, if I remember right, of the entire population of Yuma County, yet consistently, we're higher than that. And of course, there's cultural elements too, as, as Hispanics, we like hugging and kissing and, you know, we see mom and we want to hug her and, but sometimes right now is not the time, maybe a virtual hug, right? Or a kiss from far away from mom and dad, because we don't want to infect them. And that's one of the things that we're going to have to be dealing with as we talk about reopening too, is can we educate our public to really mask up consistently, wash their hands, not touch their faces, and, and shelter in place? The other item is that Jonathan Athens, he's the Coca-Pong Communications Director. He's going to be working over the next month with all of the command level officers and fire and police for Coca-Pong, Kichon, IHS. He asked me to reach out to Mayor Anaya, and then he's going to be using Vice Chairman, or Chairman of Court of, sorry. And we're going to be making videos that have to do with the holidays that are coming up, because we have Thanksgiving coming up, and then we have Christmas, and then right after that, we have New Year's Eve. And of course, those will create spikes again. So we're going to try to help the people to appreciate that there's things they can do to get around that and to not create even more infections. And that's all I have. Thank you so much, Vice Mayor and Council.
Finance Director, Zarina.
Hi, good, good evening, Mayor, Council members. Zarina Gallegos, Finance Director. Over the last couple of weeks, we've been, I've been working with the, our purchasing agent for on our credit card policy, as well as on our credit card policy on our procurement, procurement process in preparation for the procurement committee, meeting at the end of the, at the end of this month. In addition to working with human resources to fill one of our positions and coordinating the yearly audit, which will also take place during the month. We work very closely with our Parks and Rec Department on their, on their IBF, on their landscaping IBF, and we'll continue working with all the departments on their procurement needs. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Just two items from Public Works. A request for proposals RFQ for engineering services were advertised a month ago. We received five proposals for roadway and transportation engineering services and six proposals for water and wastewater engineering services. We sent the proposal and the scoring package to the panel review. The due date to submit and review the score will be Friday, October 16th. By that time, we're going to choose the top three candidates or engineering companies for the roadway and transportation and for water and wastewater design services. And another project is the main street pumpings light. We are going to replace the rope light, the rope LED lights on the east main street. And we are planning to install new rope lights on the east side of main street, which is basically in front of the community center. We have 16 pumpings in front of the community center, and we're planning to install the new rope LED lights on those pumpings. We're working on, on getting the quote and proposal for, for a We're working on, on getting the quote and proposal for, for uh trimming the, the pumpings as well as selling the uh new L E D uh rope lights. Thank you.
Government Director, Mr. Pachia.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council members. Um, as you remember, we have a welcome sign project back in January. The Kofa High uh students were working in a welding design to start it in the front coming, coming uh on the Mesa down. I think it's going to be out by the uh canal area. So we're reviving this project again, so I'm, I'm meeting tomorrow with the uh, with the teacher, Christopher Smart. And we're going to meet just to let her know the, an update of the design, how far they, they have completed. And the students are still working, they're back to, to classroom, so they're still working on the design again. So hopefully, um before the end of the year, this project will be completed during the uh, the school session. What's coming up, I'll meet with them tomorrow to see how it's going and bring them back um maybe before you pretty soon. Um, also, La Michoacana Plus, finally, uh we are expected to receive the building plans at the end of this week. Um, so we're going to use a electronic plan review for this project to, to speed up the process. Uh, we don't need paper at this time. Um, at the end, it's going to be paper required, but right now we're using the electronic plan review. Uh, it helps the applicant to not only save money on the paper, but also the, the process is going to be a lot faster. Um, one of the uh, the, the issues that they have, they wanted to use the uh patio facing Main Street. And because of the uh C two zoning, it was a twenty-feet uh setback requirement. But as you know, the intent on Main Street is to bring the buildings to the street to create a pedestrian-oriented design. So we're working with them, Carmen and Saou, to, to do a minor modification to allow them to bring the patio closer to the street. So that will create a better, uh you know, uh design. And that's the intent we're trying to do on Main Street. So, so they're doing that. So we're expecting the plan pretty soon. They, they finished the plan. Just this little item, I, I asked him to uh to revise the site plan because we want to have a building closer to the street. Um, also, just a couple hours ago, I got the building plan for the Oriental House. Remember the uh, this uh business owner, almost trying to come to Somer for the last couple of years? Initially, he wanted to buy this corner here, uh but he couldn't make it, so he bought the, the MetroPCS building. So he's submitting the plan to remodel the building. Um, based what I saw in the last, you know, couple of months, the concept design is really nice looking. It's going to create also a patio on the outside of the building, outdoor patio. And again, on this project, we're trying to bring a outdoor dining into the street. So we also a- asking them to, maybe not on this phase, but in the future phase, to create a patio on the front. So I, I got the plans already today. Uh, so hopefully that will be also, we're going to be doing also the electronic plan review uh to speed up the uh, you know, the plan review process. And um hopefully this uh is completed before Christmas time. Because the, the building, it's a small building, a remodel, maybe a little faster, but let's see how, what happens, but uh hopefully, these couple of buildings will here will create a little more activity on Main Street. So that's what I have so far. Thank you.
Mr. Mesa?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council. This is Mesa Parks and Recreation Director. Um, just to provide some outstanding updates right now. Um, the I F B for the contractual landscaping services was posted um on our website yesterday. It closes on October twenty-third, Friday, October twenty-third at two P M. Um, just want to commend the excellent work of finance. They really upgraded our format. And it's something that we're going to be able to use in the near future citywide for bids and all that. And also Sam for his help on just sharing his knowledge and all this process. Uh, also, the pump was purchased for the pool. It's been a priority for the past few weeks and it's scheduled to arrive in the following week. It's a new pump and the mortar. It's, it was the most convenient option because it's an outdated pump, but it's, it's a pretty sturdy one. It should last for a few years. Uh, also, for Jomino's project, um, we finalized the bidding process in terms of acquiring the quotes, the quotes. Uh, we're looking to the scope of work and just um forward, following up with the, the contractors to make sure we have everything in line and have a bidder confirmed by next Tuesday, October thirteenth. So that's what we have going on. And just on a side note, we have a tentative reopening plan available now, uh which I reviewed with all the department heads earlier today on our department head meeting. They're going to look into it and review and forward any comments. It's just to have a plan and protocol in place and uh just be aware, Council, that there's uh measures been taken, uh supplies have been ordered. The temperature check machines are scheduled to arrive next week. So there's protocols and procedures in place. So if we reopen next week, um, we are going to be fine. Thank you, everybody, and, and have a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez? Here I am.
So, okay, thank, uh yes, Vice Mayor, the only thing I have is I want to give kudos to all the uh city staff that donated their time helping out at the food bank. That was a, that was a good thing. It wasn't the paper, it wasn't social media. And, and that's a big plus for, for, for a community, for a city and, and for a staff. Uh, also, uh one of the things I want to mention is that uh when I got cut off because of my internet being unstable is that uh once we uh we get those new, new trucks, the, the sweeper and the dumper that uh, you know, that uh call the media and, you know, let the community know, you know, what we have, you know, those new trucks that we're going to be buying and, and uh you know, make a big issue out of it, just like any other city does, you know, have a council member, the whole council, take a picture, you know, and the I don't really like to do that, but it's something that we need to be proud of, you know? So maybe that when we get those trucks, Sam, or anybody that's in charge of uh in a, calling the media and, and, and letting them know that, you know, we're going to be receiving these new trucks and uh but like I said, once we get them, uh, uh, we'll make a big deal out of it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Yelcado?
Um, nothing. I just got a phone call over the weekend. I know it's COVID and everything, but uh they said uh I'm the, I'm the side of the, by the park and which one is that, Union or by uh Jomino's? Uh, they said, is there any way we can do something about, you know, some houses have the grass grown all this thick or wheat and cars inside that haven't been working for years? Is, is, they were asking me, is there like a city code that enforces that, you know, even though it's inside your yard, you have to keep it nice and clean? And, and I said, well, let me ask, but I remember when they were removing, putting stickers on old cars, people got so upset. I think, you know, they're just, I think we need to get back and and let them know, even though it's your house, I know you still doesn't have the right to. It was asking me, yeah.
Kid get that community building, oh wow.
Okay, thank you.
Around the Northern Avenue and
Uh, well, what uh, you see in that area?
Union.
Union and all that, I uh
Look at, look at the garden.
That area, there, there's that uh company.
Um, I like, uh, Mr. Gonzalez wanted to thank uh the assets for um the participation at the food bank. I think uh it's uh really easy when we start, you know, asking people to help us out, but uh when in turn we volunteer and help, you know, we're, we're helping our own community because the food bank is also, you know, helps us and especially in this time of need. Um, I also want to thank uh Carmen and all the staff that have participated in our census events. Some were good, some weren't that good, but I think overall, we did um make an impact and, and we do appreciate all your help, everybody involved. Um, yeah, long night, I know that. But um, uh, I do want to commend everybody and, and thank you all for, for helping us out. Um uh we, I know uh Mr. Gonzalez and I will be with Kokopah uh tomorrow to continue that effort of, you know, the food bank and the food distribution amongst our community. I think we, we need to keep that effort going, you know, on As a parent, I'm going to use myself as an example. Um, you know, before it used to be every two weeks, I would go grocery shopping. Now it's every other day with the gift being at home and, and it's, it's, it's uh it's hard right now, especially these, these uh Summer months. The state did provide a little bit of assistance with um, you know, D E S as far as, you know, money for, for those that receive uh free and reduced lunch, but you know this pandemic is still here and, you know, it looks like it's going to be here for a while, so I think that we can just join and, and assist in every way we can with our, with our residents and just partner with, with our local um with our local leaders. Um, I think we can, we can continue giving to our community. Um, and, and just again, you know, thank you all staff for for going through these motions and we're all learning every day. So I, I really want to thank you guys for, for stepping up and, and um and keeping the, the city running. So the fact, I think, we can adjourn.
Thank you.